Let's go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I know they're skipping it at some meetings. We've been doing it here, so that's fine. We'll just, you know, pick a corner, if you will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm just going to take a quick note of attendance here. It looks to me like we have Louise Goodwin, Diane Chakat, Kurt Dowling, Rob England, myself, and I don't see David Hewitt. Am I mistaken there? Okay, it looks like, yeah, it looks like David's absent. At least for now, he may join. And I also want to make a note that our Board of Selectmen, Representative Adrian Mandeville, will not be able to join us tonight. However, I know we have Jeff Inquirer on, so we have people from the Board of Selectmen that could provide input if needed, hopefully. Okay, I guess we can go ahead and get started. We have, first thing is, we have our public speaking section. I know this is obviously budget time. We have a lot of members of the public that are attending here. So I'd like to, this is a little unusual. We're doing this together. So for the first time, we're trying to change up our methods a little bit. So it's the first time we'll have a probably significant public speaking during the thing. I would ask members of the public a couple of things. Just one, be aware, if you're not already, that there have been some revisions to the budgets that were published a couple of weeks ago. Significant revisions, including last night, the Board of Education put some revisions downward in their expected budget, too. So those will be items that will be discussed tonight. So something to think about. In addition, if you have something to say that somebody else has already said, just, you know, it's just more succinct and quicker, more efficient to say, you know, I agree with Linda or I agree with Jack, and just, you know, make your statement briefly, just so we can move it along. We've also got a lot of feedback through the website. We appreciate everybody's input. It's important. We'll all read through that. We're not going to spend the time at the meeting to read through that, I don't believe. But it is available. Amanda, is that posted anywhere? That probably should be something that we post as part of the meeting minutes or something.
The feedback is not yet posted, but I can post it anytime.
Yeah, I think that that's probably important, just so people know that it's there, it's being read, it's part of the record.
Will do, and David Hewitt is on.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, I guess with that, we'll go ahead and go into the public speaking portion of the meeting. So I think the thing to do would probably be, if you have the app in front of you, there is an opportunity to raise your hand if you click on the section that says Participants. I'm not sure exactly how it is on all the different apps people are using phones and tablets, et cetera. But there's an opportunity to raise your hand. And so if we get a lot of people talking, we'll probably, I'm going to have a hard time sorting this out. Maybe easier, actually, how many people do we have? Twenty-seven, quite a few.
Would you like me to go one by one and ask?
Yeah, let's do that. It seemed to work pretty well with Board of Eds. Let's go ahead and do that, Amanda.
Liz, I can't unmute you. You have to unmute yourself.
Hi.
Laura, would you like to speak?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to speak?
Not necessarily right now. I, did you want, I mean, I submitted a comment, a feedback, so.
Yeah, we read that, yeah.
Thank you. Elaine Bacard, I can't unmute you. You need to unmute yourself.
Hi, nothing, thanks.
Ms. Calasi?
Not at this time.
Jenny Morrell, I cannot unmute you.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Krista Carabani?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Rochelle?
No, thank you.
Diane? Jamie Weber?
No, thank you.
Lynn Hebert? Joanne Hebert?
No, thank you.
Laura Bush?
No, nothing now.
Melissa Latesca?
No, thank you.
Katie Marino?
Nothing now.
Laura Edwards?
No, thank you.
I think we're all sat here, right?
Okay, went through everybody? Okay, thanks, Amanda. And so that'll be the end of the public speaking section. I'll just point out that we also have an agenda item at the end of the meeting that will also allow for public speak. So we'll move on to item number three, which is additions and deletions in the agenda items. I think we do have an addition I'd like to take on. I'd like to add item AA, I'm sorry, AE would be a new business item, and that would be consideration of a Board of Finance representative to the AHM Oversight Committee. So can I have a motion to add that item? Kurt motioned to add the item AE, which is the Board of Finance representative to the AHM Oversight Committee. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rob. Okay. Okay, any discussion? Okay, Board of Finance members, all in favor of adding item AE, Board of Finance representative to the AHM Oversight Committee. I'm going to go ahead and run down in order just because I think it's a little cleaner. Kurt Dowling?
Hi.
Okay, Rob England?
Hi.
Hey, Louise Goodwin?
Hi.
Okay, David Hewitt?
Hi.
All right, Diane Chakat?
Hi.
Okay, and did I get everybody? I think so. I, myself, also I, okay. No nascent extensions. Let's go ahead and note that it's passed. We'll add that to the agenda. Okay, any other additions and deletions to the agenda? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to item number four. This is the Town Administrator's Report. Eric, you have the floor. So to speak.
Muted.
Eric, you're muted.
Muted myself. Somebody remuted me. Bad. I blame Amanda.
Probably your assistant.
Anyway, my name is Eric Anderson. I'm the administrator for the Town of Andover, for those of you who don't know. So I want to talk you through real quick just what's kind of going on in town and what's impacting the budget. As of today, officially, we have two cases of COVID-19 in Andover. However, the emergency management service here, the fire department, has transported multiple additional people that likely have symptoms. So I would expect the number of people shown that are both hospitalized and/or COVID-positive to increase substantially in the next four or five days. So that's it directly on COVID. As far as grants go, the State Bond Commission finally approved Town Aid Road. So the town should get its allotment, which is approximately $190,000, pretty quickly. As most of you know, we should have gotten half of that last July and the other half in January. So the town is, you know, close to a year behind on funding Town Aid Road. You have before you a revised budget that has been approved by the Board of Selectmen. And there have been two other things that have occurred since that was presented. The first is that AES has come back and with a different budget request, and we'll go over those numbers a little bit later when we get to the actual budget. And RAM has met and had a budget meeting. In fact, they're having a budget meeting right now also. But they're not expected to actually pass a budget until the 25th. The best guidance I've gotten from the superintendent is that they are likely to come in with a level budget. And a level budget to Andover will result in about a $50,000 decrease in our expenses to RAM. As many of you know, our expense to RAM is going up roughly 7% now, if it's a level budget, because we are adding approximately 12 students more to the high school than we have currently going into the high school. And at the same time, the overall population of RAM is decreasing by about 90 students. So our fraction is going up. Even with a level budget, our costs for RAM are going to go up significantly.
Eric, just to clarify, so you said the cost was going down with this new level budget. What you mean is it's going down relative to what the budget is the Board of Selectmen passed? Just to make that clear. It overall will go up, as you just stated. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yes.
And we have zero control over that.
Correct. You also have, before you, you've been given a resolution that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen. And what that resolution does is authorizes the Board of Finance to conduct a budget hearing, pass a budget, set a mill rate. And that is in keeping with the, what is required by the executive order of the Governor of the State of Connecticut. So that's not a, you know, you, as a board, are required to do that, you know, per the state guidance. The Board of Selectmen additionally gave some kind of milestone dates that they wish the Board of Finance to meet. The first of those dates is that you have a meeting on May 6, which would be an online budget meeting to get additional feedback from the public and then allow two weeks, a full two weeks for comments. And we've additionally provided a series of different ways where the public can comment on the budget. And then on May, let's see, May 26, hold a final budget meeting and at the conclusion of which, adopt the budget and set the mill rate. So that was the resolution by the Board of Selectmen. You also have before you a series of transfers. As we know, we're in the last fiscal quarter of the year, and that means per charter, we're allowed to move money both within department budgets and from department to department. Some of the transfers I'm requesting are to move money into capital equipment so we can purchase two items. Both of those items were approved by CIP, and they were scheduled for next year's budget. However, since we're truncating the capital equipment for next year's budget and we're capable of transferring money from the rest of that department, because we had frankly a very mild winter and we way underspent our snow removal budget, we're going to move both those purchases up to now, so it's out of next year's budget. And additionally, the Board of Selectmen already also approved purchasing a, the updated software package for the appraiser, or correction, the, what office am I thinking? Used by both the tax collector and the assessor called Vision. Basically, the previous mission has been phased out and is no longer supported. And we're taking that money from the assessor's legal budget. Because at this point of the year, there are no pending lawsuits. There's nothing that should require spending that money. So that's also a fairly large transfer. There will be a lot more transfers in May, June, and July, but we're just getting some of the big ones out of the way now to go ahead and pay for things that we need to pay for. So that's it for me, unless you all have questions for me.
Any questions for Eric? We will discuss this in more detail, but.
You know, Mark, I have a quick question for Eric. Dave Hewitt here.
Yep.
You kind of alluded to the state requires that we have to do a budget. And I'm just wondering if you could address that, because I was reading through some of the email comments. Obviously, some people are pretty upset about that, holding a budget without a town meeting. Do you have any guidance on that from the state?
From the state, little to none. We actually asked the state directly for an interpretation of the governor's guidelines. And their response to that was, check with your town's attorney. So we have also gotten an official opinion from the town's attorney that is online on the town's website under the budget subcategory. So you can read the full text of that. But the basic thing is that the governor has compelled the governing body of the town, which in our case is the Board of Selectmen, to authorize or to require the Board of Finance to pass a budget instead of mill rate. So we had initially had some questions for our attorney. Is that mandatory? Is it kind of mandatory? Is there wiggle room? Can we hold a drive-by vote? Can we do this? Can we do that? And the answer, and I've also consulted with the other town administrators around us, and the answer is, it was not optional. The executive order clearly said that it shall be done, not it may be done. And on that basis, our attorney's guidance is that that is the procedure that is required by the state. So that's kind of the, what we're operating under. It's not what we want, but it's what we're required.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Eric? Thanks for that question, Dave. I think that was an important one that needed to be brought up because there were a lot of concern over that on the comments, and it was a good time to bring that up. All right, Eric, thank you. Let's go on to Agenda Item 5, Treasurer's Report. Item A is the Status of the Town Financial Audit. So Barbara, can you update us on where we are?
I sure can. We got the draft last week. The auditor and I, Thursday afternoon, went over it. I had a few questions, things that he ended up reincorporating, waiting for the final round. He had a couple of housekeeping things to do. Attorney letters weren't back this week. But I expect the final any day. And it's, we already talked about balance, because I really had a lot of the numbers worked up before they did their onsite field work. So we're still comfortable with that half million excess in fund balance. I want to ask you a question, though, about the audit report. Ordinarily, when I would receive paper copies, I would bring them to the next meeting. I don't know if we need to have as many paper books as we usually get. And I will send everyone the, how forward the final. After I receive it, and I'm going to put it on next month's agenda, it will be discussion of the audit. And I don't know if at some point, as is customary, the auditor would come and talk to you, you know, and just answer any questions you have. That's all pending, of course. But I will send you all copies, so if it's on the agenda next month, we can talk about that.
So by copies, you mean electronic copies?
Electronic, that's the way I receive it.
Yeah, I think that if, in this case, if anybody wants a hard copy, which I may at some point, just because sometimes these are a page.
Right.
They can contact you separately.
That's right. We usually, usually get about 20 hard copies. And I don't know if we're going to need that many, but I will definitely, they always bind it and send hard copies. But initially, we'll have the electronic. It's a lot forward that. So any questions about that?
Any surprises, anything that didn't expect?
No, we had, you know, I, he had given me a file with all of the schedules, and so I pretty much worked up the numbers. And so there wasn't anything that I didn't know about. He didn't, you know, we had an ongoing dialogue, you know, the whole time. I was working, they were working, so absolutely no surprises, no. But I'm hoping the same thing will happen next year with the same audit firm. Again, I'll get the schedules. I'll work them up before they even begin to do their field work. So I think, I absolutely no idea what kind of a schedule we're looking at for next year. But when I find out, I'll let you know. I hope it's earlier, and it should be earlier. But that's all pending right now. So any other questions about the audit? If not, I'm going to move on to Town Budget Summary. That summary that you received, that I think it's an eight to 10-page document. Within the last few days, I took that document and I converted it to a Word document, and then I separated, did page breaks. And I went through every single budget and highlighted everything where I thought we were really going to have a surplus of money. Eric and I discussed this a little bit on Monday. But as you can imagine, some of the budgets, such as elections, I think we're going to end up with about $23,000 that isn't going to be spent because they had training money in there, and obviously, no one's going anywhere now, any training. And with all of the elections canceled, there's going to be no activity, no spending out of that. So what I will do per charter is reach out to the department heads or the people who put those budgets together, give them a copy and just say, hey, you know, where do you think you have money you want to release? And then per charter, just get that, that written okay that, yeah, I'm not going to need this money and it can be reallocated somewhere else. So elections is an example, and there are other ones, you know, just things that were in the budget that just aren't going to happen. So Eric and I will be kind of going through that page by page. I'll be reaching out to department heads and see what we come up with. And along that same line, Eric is going to kind of consider where that might be reallocated. But I think at next month's meeting, maybe as we have kind of a sense of what kinds of dollar amounts we're dealing with, I don't know if you want to have, talk about where that might be reallocated so we don't have a huge amount flowing into fund balance. So we're working on it now. If you have questions, let me know. Any, any feedback on that?
I'll be down at this point. Curious is what the magnitude of it is going to be, but maybe that's a little premature.
Thousands. I said thousands.
It's under like tens of thousands, maybe.
Well, it could be, could be, yeah. And that's why Eric and I, you know, as I say, I've got everything, you know, kind of like highlighted now, and we'll go through and see, see who it's affecting. Okay, on revenue, the town side is doing fine in terms of our revenue, education cost sharing. We're getting, as I said last time, a little more than we had budgeted. No idea yet on what impact we're going to have on tax collections. This being a collection month right now, quarterly collection month. Maybe by next meeting, I'll be able to give you some sense, perhaps, if there's been any impact just on the third quarter collections. The Board of Selectmen opted not to offer a grace period for payment of taxes. That was an option that they could have adopted, but at their meeting, and Jeff's on, if I'm, you know, speaking out of turn or just saying anything incorrectly, let me know. But the thing that they are going to allow is a reduction in interest, interest rate for people who pay their taxes late. As of, now that would apply to April, April, May, June, and then through the first quarter of the new year. So people are still expected to pay on time. If they don't pay on time, they'll get a reduction in interest. And so that's, that's where we are with that. And we'll keep tabs on what we're doing in terms of collections. Obviously, the rest of this year is not going to be terribly impacted. But we'll see what happens first quarter of the new year. Car spending, I just sent the usual report. And then as Eric said, we've expecting the grant money. We'll let you know when we have that. And the over expenditure report, you have nothing on there that is new, nothing that we're not, Eric isn't kind of have an idea of how it's going to be covered, either something within a department or now that we can do the transfers between departments, we'll be shoring that up. And that's it for me. Questions?
Any questions for Barbara? Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and move on to Item 6, Budget Transfers. Budget, 6A, Budget Transfers, Supplemental Appropriations, and Overspenditure Requests.
Okay, no overspenditure requests this round. And Eric, you spoke, you touched on the transfers. You have them in front of you. I believe they were in the packet. The big ones, Eric's already talked about, the reallocating and the assessor software legal and snow removal. And then there were just a couple of minor ones, housekeeping things that have been kind of carried forward on the over expenditure report. So that is it for now. What you have in front of you, and as Eric said, we'll have more as, as the, as the weeks progress.
Eric, do you want to talk a little bit about these, the capital expenditures, the snow removal transfers you have, and exactly what that's covering and why it's actually needed?
Okay, sure, I'll talk you through. And actually, we might as well start right with the top. The first is a transfer from the line item for the Assessor's Office Legal Counsel to the Assessor's Office Software. That is a transfer of $5,000. That's the purchase cost of Vision 8 appraisal software, which the Board of Selectmen approved around December and has been installed on the computer. That was done simply because the old version of Vision was no longer supported by the company that originally wrote it, and we had to switch versions. The second thing is appropriations within the Department of Public Works budgets. Basically, we had a pretty mild winter. And so that means we had excess money in the categories that directly related to snow removal, which is both overtime wages and sand and salt. And also, we had a little excess money in the meals budget because we are obligated by union contract to provide meals anytime we call the Public Works Department out on an emergency basis. So the money for the meals is going to shore up the snow plow budget or the plow blade budget. Those are the little carbide pieces that fit on the end of the plow blade that get worn off every year on our roads. Basically, what we had budgeted wasn't enough for one complete set of blades for the town. So I authorized the over expenditure, and now we're truing that up. And the remaining little bit of money, we, I just stuck in the Public Works Vehicle Maintenance Account because that one's overdrawn also. The second one was under the sand and salt category. As most of you know, this year, we switched. As most of you know, this year we switched from using a sand salt mix to an all salt mix for treating the roads. Which so far seems to have been very well regarded by the public. Um, so basically, we made a decision early on that we would over expend the salt budget. Knowing that we weren't gonna spend the sand budget. So now we've, you know, we authorized that over expenditure. Uh, we ran over about twenty seven hundred dollars in salt, but we didn't spend anything out of the sand budget. So now we're taking, and we do still have some a stockpile of sand left. So there's no real need to to top off our sand at the end of this year. So we're going to move enough money into the salt budget to cover what we've spent so far and zero that one out. And the rest of the money, we're gonna put in the the capital expenditure line item, which is one one zero one. Dash seven zero two, uh, that is a uh, a capital account, which means it doesn't go away at the end of the year. Out of that twenty one thousand dollars, it is our intention to spend roughly nineteen thousand dollars of that. To purchase two pieces of equipment that CIP has already given the blessing on. One is something that fits on the front of our wheeled loader, which allows you to pick up heavy things. Without having to put it in the bucket. It's called a material hoist. Um, currently, we're, every time we need one. We drive our loader over to Coventry, we put the thing on and we drive it back and we do what we need to do and then we drive the loader back there. Um, so we are borrowing one now, but it's something that we should have and we were originally gonna buy it with the machine. But we ended up not doing it.
The lifetime on a piece of equipment like that?
As longer, longer than the loader, so a minimum of fifteen year lifespan on that.
Okay.
Um, because it's a pretty, it's a very simple piece. I mean, it's just, it's just a uh. Little hydraulically activated arm essentially. Um, and the second piece is a uh material, it's, it's. I'm having a hard time describing it. Basically, it fits on the back of a big plow truck or a big truck. And you open up the little gate in the back of the truck and when material comes out, which is loam. Or sand or asphalt, it falls in this little conveyor belt and the conveyor belt moves it off to the side. And the reason we're getting that is we spend an enormous amount of time after paving project. Backfilling behind the curb and smoothing everything out. And one of the real problems we have is we have no efficient way to get material from the truck onto the side of the road. What you do is you take the loader, you dump it from the truck onto the loader, some of it spills in the road. And then you back the loader up, you turn it ninety degrees to the road and you dump the material. So what this does is allows it to be moved directly from the truck to the side of the road where it belongs. So it it's really more just a time saver than anything else. And one of the things I've done is just watch Public Works. As they work and that was one of the things that just kind of made me crazy how long it was taking them to do that. So this is a response. Uh, to that. Um, the next item is overtime wages for snow removal. And I, as far as I know, we're done plowing for the year. Um, although if you asked me that last week, I would have said the same thing and, you know, we went out and plowed uh on Saturday morning. Um, so we're gonna take that money and we're gonna split it between tree removal. And the Public Works Vehicle Maintenance. So I asked Board of Selectmen for permission to over expend the tree removal. So we could get the four really large trees down by the recreational field taken care of because they were dead. And large limbs were starting to do uh fall down and it was a safety hazard. So we removed that. And this week, we also removed two trees. You know, that it was fairly inexpensive, but we had to remove another two trees that were weakened by the storm. And we're we're dramatically leaning over our roads. So we're, by adding three thousand to that budget. We should be right about equal to what we've spent so far within, you know, four or five hundred dollars. Um, fuel additive is something we dump in our large exterior diesel tank. That prevents it from gelling. Um, we didn't use quite as much as we used if it had been a really cold winter. And we used more fuel for plowing. So we're gonna throw that money into the mobile phone. Um, Ed, uh, the Public Works Director is not the most IT savvy guy in the world. And uh, for some reason, he keeps just absolutely blowing through his data plan. Because I think he leaves the Weather Channel on all the time because he's paranoid about it snowing. Um, so Amanda has helped him and we've gotten better, but that budget has gone over a little bit. In part because I forced him to get a smartphone, so we could actually do some of those things. Uh, and then the last thing is that uh, the salary line item. For myself, for the town administrator was uh quite a bit higher than it needs to be. Um, for two reasons. One, I make less than my predecessor. And two, we had about a two month period where we didn't have an actual administrator. Or month and a half period where we didn't have an administrator. So. Between those two things, we have some excess money there. And uh Amanda has been working quite a bit of extra hours since we've started in on the COVID nineteen response. Because she's the portion person that makes all these online meetings happen. So we're running over her line item pretty considerably and I'm basically just taking that from my salary line item. Uh, so that's it for what I'm asking for for appropriation transfers out of this period. Questions?
Sounds like none. Okay. And we need to uh vote on these, correct?
Correct.
Is the dollar amounts uh involved? Okay. Then may want to make a motion relative to the uh transfer request?
You think we can just make a motion for all in one shot?
I would think so.
Yes, you can.
Okay. Well, uh, I guess I'll move then that we adopt the fund transfers as proposed by the town administrator.
I'll second.
Okay. Rob proposes uh or motions and Diane seconds. Okay, we'll go ahead and uh. Take a vote. Uh, again, we'll go ahead and in order. Uh, send a discussion. Okay, now we can vote. Okay, Rob?
I'm good. Yep.
Hi, I'll say.
Hi, sorry.
Kurt?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Louise?
Hi.
Okay, and I'll vote I also. No nays, no abstentions. Okay, you got that, Amanda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and I think that takes care of uh item six on our agenda. Item seven is old business. This is the Governor's Executive Order. And I think this is just relative to the um Governor's Order about the, you know. Board of Finance's position in requiring to um. The Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen to appoint the, require the Board of Finance to uh create a budget and set the mill rate. Uh, that's correct, right, Eric? Remember?
Correct.
Yeah. And I I don't think there's actually any action that we need to take at this point, uh, but it is open for discussion. Uh, Eric's discussed it a little bit and brought it up and we've discussed it at prior meetings. Um, anybody have any questions or comments on this? Okay. As Eric mentioned, the attorney's opinion is on the website. Um, it was pretty clear, surprisingly, and nobody. Really wants us to be in this position, but unfortunately, here we are, so. Okay, uh, so hearing no more discussion, we'll move on to item eight, which is discuss and act upon the uh. Eight A is the budget schedule and timeline. So um, as I think Eric recounted or. Uh, Barbara made, but Barbara, when she was giving her presentation, the Board of Selectmen and their resolution. Uh, required a meeting of the Board of Finance on May sixth. Do you have public uh input add to the, as to the budget? And then also a uh meeting on the twenty sixth of May. Um, to vote on the final budget and set the mill rate. So if I got those states and things correct, I believe.
That is correct.
Yeah, I'm I'm a little confused by the the twenty sixth. I mean, Wednesday is our normal meeting day, but there may have been a reason for it.
So those were not the original dates I proposed. Those were the dates the Board of Selectmen decided to adopt. So you would have to bring that up with the board directly. I had planned on the process taking probably two more weeks. To give you the thirty day extension that the Board of Selectmen had originally voted on, but they felt it was appropriate. To shorten the timeline um and motions to that effect.
Okay. So we actually uh do have both Jeff McQuire and Jeff Murray, I think, on the call. Uh, do either of you guys wanna make a comment as to the timing? Or or, you know, whether that's hard and fast, or did it just seem prudent to to try and move the process along?
The thought was to move the process along, Mark. Um, if you, if you determine that you can't meet that. I'm sure that we'll be more than willing to work with you, but we wanted the uh, the timeline to move a little quicker than the thirty days.
Okay. Fair enough. So I guess I'd put it to the members of the Board of Finance uh out there for discussion. We uh don't have all the information we're gonna need for our budget, uh, but we have a fairly solid. Uh, proposed budget. It's it's there from the town administrator, obviously developed this. Uh, and work with the Board of Selectmen. It's modified, it's been changed. Uh, we've talked about it on and off. We don't have the final budget from AES. Although we do have the number that they're proposing. Uh, we don't have the final number from RAM, as Eric mentioned earlier. Although we have a pretty good idea of what it probably will be. So given that, May sixth. Is that realistic? Uh, do we have any? Discussion on that matter from the uh Board of Finance attendees, members?
I mean, the May sixth date for me seems reasonable, provided everybody that we're waiting on finalizes what they're doing. Um, in advance of that, I don't have a problem with May sixth. Um, as you know, uh, that the second date is more of a problem for me. Uh, in that it's a Tuesday night and Tuesdays are bad for me, but that's just my own personal thing and worst comes to worst. You know, I'm sure we'll have a quorum without.
Um, sorry, this is Jeff again. You have flexibility in those states. Please don't think that we're. Dictating exactly the 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 day that you need to get this done by. If you take a day or extra. I'm sure Eric and I and and the rest of the Board of Selectmen members won't come back to you and start to complain.
Mark, thanks, Jeff.
I uh, I I concur with what the what Jeff had just said. Um, we're already scheduled for a regular meeting on the twenty seventh. That's that's one day beyond. You know, the date that they set on Tuesday and, you know, like in Rob's case, Tuesdays don't really work for him. Um, and I had already have, I have the twenty seven set aside already. So I don't think that one day would matter on that part. You know, we'd be on the sixth and then finalize everything on the twenty seventh is okay with me.
Yeah, I I would have to concur for myself that that would make the most sense, um, you know, for for us. Or at least for me and it's that.
I just ask um, Jeff and Jeff and Jeff, is there, was there any particular reason for the Tuesday date? Before I throw a wrench in the works?
No, the uh, when it was being discussed by the other members of the Board of Selectmen, it was just, you know, spreading out the weeks. It wasn't a specific final day that you guys had.
So as long as it's that week.
Have the meeting on Wednesday and we'll be good.
Okay.
Diane or Louise or Dave, any uh input?
I agree, no problem to move it to Wednesday for me either.
I think I'm fine, Mark.
I'm sorry, Louise, you kind of broke up there, missed that.
I'm sorry, I'm good too. I'll set.
All right. Well, it's it's a fairly aggressive schedule, but I don't disagree with trying to move this along. Um, if if something blows up or changes and we're uncomfortable with where it's going, I suppose we can always uh address it at the time. Um, if if people are in general agreement on the board, then I suggest we entertain a motion to set a special meeting on May sixth. To uh establish a proposed budget and obtain public input. Anyone want to move?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Thank you, Kurt motions, Rob seconds. Okay, any discussion that we haven't already had? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and we'll vote. Uh, Rob?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Okay, Dave?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Louise?
Hi.
Okay, I will also vote I, so that's unanimous. All right. Okay, very good. I think we have at least a preliminary timeline. We'll establish that special meeting. Amanda, you got that? So we're gonna need to set up that agenda. Good, thank you. Okay. All right, I think that's pretty much all we can really do at this point, the budget timeline and just hope that all goes where all where we needed to go.
Mark, can I?
Yep.
Can I suggest that you guys discuss whether you want to have intermediate budget workshops? I mean, we.
Yeah, this would be the time probably to talk about that. Um, and you know, as you and I kind of talked, I think we we do need to do that. Well, if we're gonna meet on May sixth and Wednesday's our day, uh, we can discuss having a a meeting on.
Twenty ninth?
Twenty ninth. Geez, time really is.
It follows. Um, worse for me, if you guys can do it, I can do the twenty ninth.
Yeah, fine with me too, the twenty ninth.
Kurt's checking his phone. Dave, Louise, Louise, you're on mute.
Alex, me too.
Okay.
I'm good, Mark.
Okay.
Twenty.
Okay.
This is Dave, the twenty ninth is open as of now. Yep.
Okay.
The twenty ninth at seven?
Yep. Hey, we want to have a motion to set a special meeting uh for the Board of Finance to review the budget and develop a proposed budget. On the twenty ninth of April. Okay, Louise, motions?
I'll second.
Diane seconds, somebody else might have stepped in. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead around and vote. Rob?
Hi.
Hey, Kurt?
Hi.
Hey, uh, Dave?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
And Louise?
Hi.
I'll also vote I, so we'll set up a special meeting. Get the thumbs up from Amanda, very good, seven P M uh next. Wednesday and the twenty ninth. All right, thank you, Eric. It's a good point. We're gonna need to do that and uh this is the point to bring that up. Okay, any other discussion on the budget schedule? Okay, we'll go to item eight B, which is the Board of Education and Fiscal, excuse me, Fiscal Year twenty 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 one budget. Now, we actually don't have this in front of us, uh, the final budget. We, the budget was. For the published in a preliminary form and we did receive uh some information from Laura Edwards. That indicated where they had made some changes. It was a little hard for me initially to kind of figure out. Exactly where she was indicating those changes and where they went from. It was a little hard for me initially to kind of figure out exactly where she was indicating those changes and where they went from. But it looks like they're, they're shifting expenses about 71 to $271,000, which means they were probably over budgeted for this year, either contingency or whatever they moved in. I'm not sure what those expenses are. Be curious to know that. There's a health insurance notation that it moved from 5.8% to 3.3%. And I think that was just a miscalculation in the original budget that got corrected. They've got a notation here of a retirement replacement, they reduced by $10,000. Not sure what the origin of that was. I missed that part of the discussion of the Board of Ed meeting. Diesel fuel reduced by 6,000, I presume just because of the less need and less cost. Facility supplies, $3,000. Custodial summer staffing, $12,000. Again, no real explanation that you should pay to be at the Board of Education, we were talking about these specifics. But they're adding an additional one half time paralegal. They've got an addition of 13,245 in there.
Mark, excuse me, on that, my understanding that was left in there by mistake and that could potentially be removed.
The additional 0.5 para?
Yeah, so that's something I speak with Shannon about.
Okay.
I was on that meeting when they were talking about that and it seemed like originally one of their reductions was, was to reduce some classroom or teacher, and then they wanted to add a half a para to, to help with that. And then they chose not to do that. So and they didn't take that half para back out.
Okay, so as Dave said, then that could potentially come out. It's probably just in there from their proposal. Okay.
And another thing that is not in there that they talked about at the meeting is the combination of the finance departments. There is nothing in their budget that has made any adjustments to any salary expense or cost savings on their side for that.
Yeah, I heard that as well. And we don't know what that's going to be, but I think we need to get a number.
Estimate. Didn't you think we could estimate what we anticipate?
Yeah.
And then there was talking, this is one thing I'm confused about. There was a talk about accounting and I don't know with the combination of the finance department, does that mean we will come under one accounting system and have like two cost centers, so to speak? So they were talking about accounting software and maintenance and things like that.
Yeah, Eric, you want to?
Combine into ours, it would go away, right, on their side?
So I can speak to that. Currently, we use the same accounting package. The school and the town both use a software package called Phoenix, which is, which is a municipal specific software package, but that's no longer being supported. So what we have been talking about is what we have to switch to for software. And the, so we have demoed several packages. And we are hoping to be looking at QuickBooks also as a lower cost solution for both the, the town and the school. So we would in fact be using essentially a single software package. And basically the school is just one of the cost centers of the town, essentially, if you can think of it that way. So that would be the, what we would be looking at. And then, you know, we're, we're still essentially trying to figure out what would have to happen to adopt QuickBooks and whether that's a viable option or not. The town in its, in its proposed budget has a line item for software adoption. Because we anticipated that because we didn't have a budget in this year's budget, we would have to budget it for in the next fiscal year. The Board of Finance, or correction, the Laura, the, the budget person, actually, she could probably speak to it herself because she's on this call, has indicated that they probably could pay for the transition out of their current budget, which would then save that amount of money from the town's budget. If we can get the coordination done and do it in time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so would we get revised figures on the AES budget with those costs all adjusted in there? So we could see what total number we're looking at before we have to make a the decision, because I'd like to see where the numbers all fall. It's kind of hard just getting that little note saying we're reducing these things. Because I, there's other things that have to be fixed in the budget to get the right number.
Understood. I, I can tell you that this has been a hot topic of discussion at the Board of Selectmen. The guidance I've gotten from the Board of Selectmen is that what we're shooting for is essentially one part-time finance director and one full-time bookkeeper slash, you know, probably a very high level bookkeeper to, to take over all of those functions. Currently between the two departments, we have three full-time people. So we would be basically cutting staff collectively in half between the two of them. But that's exactly how that happens. I don't think we've really nailed down yet.
Yeah, so let me take, that may take a little bit of work. We do have Laura on the call. I don't know if, if anybody has any specific questions for her we could ask. I don't know that we want to take up a whole lot of time, but, you know, she may have a sense of when, when we'll get a copy, be able to look at the budget in detail. Laura, do you have anything to add?
Um, I don't know where to start. You caught me with a mouthful of food.
Sorry.
It's okay. The part-time para is definitely something they want in the budget. So the number that was presented per Shannon's letter was 3,916. And that includes the para, so that, that's not going to change.
Okay.
The running software, we have the funds this year to move that forward. So our thought was let the Board of Ed do that. And that would be a possible reduction to the town's budget for next year. What else did you want my address? The combining of the departments. I think there's still a lot of review that needs to happen. One of my primary concerns is the human resource function that takes up a lot of my time is not really being addressed, I don't feel, in the merger. So there's, you know, there's kind of a lot of details of, you know, what the, the Board of Ed needs to understand what's being taken away. That would either have to be covered by another staff person or, you know, the part-time position you have in your plan becomes a full-time position with, I, I don't know, there's just, there's just a lot of detail that still has to be fleshed out for combining those offices. And I, I don't think we're there yet.
No, it doesn't sound like it. Do you know when we might be able to get a copy of the budget with the updated numbers? This is obviously a summary of the changes.
Probably I can try to have it to you by next week.
If we can have it in advance of our next meeting, that would obviously be the best.
The, the bottom line is the 3,916. There's a, there was a lot of, you know, for the presentation purposes, last night I condensed it down, but there's a, there's a lot of detail behind that, those changes. So I will do my best.
I would really like to see the detail. It would be helpful to figure out where we're at.
All right, yeah, if you can do that, it would be helpful. Thank you, Laura. Any other questions for Laura while we're, we have her on?
Mark, this is Kurt. I don't have any more questions for Laura, but I was on the, I listened to the entire meeting last night too. And my takeaway from that was Dan Form from the Board of Education had discussed about getting the two parties or three parties together. I need to discuss this, this, this new, this new plan between the town and the school. There wasn't a whole, there hasn't been hardly any movement on that. I think it's between the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen who come up with a plan for that. And bottom number that I took away from the meeting last night was that they reduced their existing budget by $100,049 in that, in that vicinity.
Yeah, 149,000, I think it was.
Right, right, so. But that was, that was my, my two takeaways from last night in regards to both, both.
And they also made an addition to staff in that, so we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, well, I think the addition to staff Diane was the one that the superintendent had already cut. She'd cut a teaching position and a para position after receiving the letter from the Board of Selectmen to reduce to 200,000. I, I think my, my timing's correct on that. And, and that was, the numbers were worked so they could, you know, replace that position, you know, and not do away with that. And then that's when the half para came up. And I'm, I'm still, you know, not sure about how that's going to work either.
Yeah, I'm fuzzy about that because I didn't see that there was any cut anywhere. I thought that was proposed and then they took that back. And they didn't take out the para. Bro, I'm confused on that, so I guess that's what we need to do.
Jerry, you're on, you're on the call, maybe Jerry can, can shed some light on that. For another board member. Board of Education member. Anybody want to talk?
This is Laura. So we did not cut a a teacher. We did add a para. We have larger class sizes we're dealing with. And that was strongly felt that a halftime para would be beneficial for the larger classes that we are starting to experience.
All right, so I would, you know, my thinking here is there's obviously a lot of work to do between the, the, the school district, the Board of Ed, the town, and maybe the Board of Selectmen involved too, to try to figure out how this is going to work. But we've got to settle on a number too, so maybe I'm not sure if that's, it's the town, you know, Eric working with, with the school or if it's the Board of Selectmen working with the Board of Ed, but then somebody's going to have to kind of get this together and figure out what the impact on the budget really is going to be. Eric, have any thoughts on that?
So I, I mean, I can probably, you know, the, to, to, from my perspective, the human resources component is also one of my bigger concerns. Because that's something we don't necessarily do a great job of right now. I've started to talk with CROG Capital Regional Council of Government because CROG has just signed a contract with the Human Resources Staffing Agency specifically for the small towns. But I, I haven't gotten to the point where we're exploring what it would really cost to, to provide those services to the town. That's going to be, I mean, we just signed the contract, CROG did, this afternoon. So it's going to be a little while before we understand what, you know, what our costs would be. We can certainly approach them for that. We know that a you know, we know we're looking at, per the Board of Selectmen, roughly one and a half positions. So presumably there will be some savings compared to what we have now. But I will also talk, tell you that I've talked to at least three other organizations that ended up combining school and towns. And I've talked to the finance directors and all of the finance directors told me personally that the end result was not a lot of cost savings. What they ended up with was a much smoother organization that was a lot more functional, but it wasn't necessarily, you know, I wouldn't anticipate that combined, you know, we're going to be saving $100,000 by combining those, you know.
Part, part of what I think I'm getting at is just it doesn't sound to me like there's a process to reach resolution right now between the town and the, and the school district.
Right, yeah, I mean.
Because I think we have to come up with one and figure it out, so.
Yeah. Mark?
Yeah, go ahead, Adrian.
Yeah, this is Adrian. So Eric and I, we're going to try to sit down next week and break out all the job descriptions and try to put together a plan so that we can come back to you as quickly as possible with a plan to move forward. And we will send a copy of that over to the school and see if they have some input on it as well.
Yeah, I would think that you need to have it on there and it sounds like, you know, there's some concerns, so.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we know it needs to be, but unfortunately, we've been waiting for them to, to actually, to move forward. They, they just did that last night, so now we feel like we can move forward.
Okay, all right, so.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Louise.
I need a little clarification of that 2% that they're looking to set aside. Is that 2% of the 149,000 that they want to set aside for that possible special outplacement? And if there's a, is there a deadline that they need to know, done information by?
Same questions. I'm trying to look at what is the money they're supposed to be sending back to us?
So I can.
Our amount is.
So I can partially answer that and maybe Laura can further answer that. The first is that by state law, school boards are allowed to hold back with the permission of the Board of Finance, 2% of their budget and put it into basically a, for lack of a better term, a emergency account, similar to what the town has with contingency. That fund currently has about $180,000 in it, something in that range. I believe the Board of Education is concerned that they have a student currently that is likely to be outplaced, is either already outplaced now or is likely to be outplaced in the future, in the short term. And that that's likely to cost the district, you know, $100,000 a year or so. And that's not an expense they budgeted up to this point.
So is that coming out of the 149,000?
No, that is coming out of the current budget that we're operating under. Indicating that they will have, they will underspend their budget by more than 2% and therefore they're asking for permission to put 2% of that into their essentially contingency fund.
Louise, you may, you may remember a couple, a few meetings ago, we had a request to do that for last year's budget, which we declined to act on. I think there's about 82,000 that should be coming back to the town based on that. So this would be the, the analog for this, this fiscal year. And I don't know that there is any kind of deadline for that. I mean, well, there is a deadline, but I don't think it's until the fall or, or the mid-year or something like that.
That's correct, Mark. The, the, the year has to close out in July. We'll then do final closeouts through the month of August and then the, they would then submit that they want to try to keep the funds at that point.
Yeah.
But I'm a little surprised that they're asking for the, they've got 114, 9, 913 excess. They're asking for 2% of that, which would be 81,300. But it doesn't make sense, given that they already have 180,000 in that account.
Yeah, and I, I'll say that my view of this request is that Yeah. And I, I'll say that my view of this request is that it's just a heads up. You know, we don't have to act on it tonight. We don't have to make any decisions. This is just something that they're giving us, you know, basically a heads up that this is going to occur. I'm sure they'd like a commitment on it. I think that would be premature and unwise on the part of the Board of Finance to go down that road when we don't really know what the future holds the next three months, much less six or eight. But that's, that's kind of my position. I do not think we need to make any determination on that right now. Any other questions or comments on that? All right. So it seems to me that, you know, I, I'll say that until we really have better information, there's, there's not much more that we can really do in terms of the, the school budget. It's just a component of our overall budget. I think we've got an idea of where they've gone. They did make an effort and they reduced 100 and almost 150,000 from their, from their last budget. And it's just going to be a roll-up component and topic of discussion, I'm sure, for next week, assuming we get the details in time. Everybody have any other questions or comments on that? Okay, hearing none. I guess we can move to item HC, which is revised fiscal year 2021 proposed budget from the Board of Selectmen. This is the one that we had distributed a few days ago electronically. It's also in your, sorry to pack up the, Eric's been working on it. He and I discussed, and my personal opinion is that it probably makes sense for him to talk about the highlights, talk about the impact, talk about any material variances from this year and what the impacts of those are going to be. As most of you are aware, the original proposed budget came in at about 11% higher than the current budget this year, which would have meant a substantial mill increase. Obviously, with the, that was deemed excessive by both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. We were looking for something significantly less. And now with the pandemic upon us, we are obviously looking for a lot less. And Eric, you kind of summarized it in your document, but do you want to kind of give us your, your overview on that?
Sure. I'll give you the overview. First of all, this is a budget that was largely presented to the Board of Selectmen at their April 13th meeting. And the board made some changes to it and recommended that it be moved on to the Board of Finance. The Board of Selectmen had recommended that the elementary school budget be reduced by $200,000. The Board of Education has proposed $149,000 reduction from their current budget. We do not have the final numbers from RAM yet. RAM is meeting even as we speak. But they have pushed back their adoption date. They were originally going to pass their budget tonight. They have pushed that back to the 25th. So they're going to adopt a budget in about three days. The best guess I have from the superintendent is that they're going to end up with a level budget. And a level budget, from our perspective, will mean about a $50,000 reduction from the number that is in the budget before you. So AES is proposing $50,000 less of a cut than what's in the budget. RAM will likely come out with a $52,000 to $53,000 reduction if what their proposal is, ends up. And so the net budget would be basically what's presented to you in this calculation, other than slightly less from the elementary school, slightly more from RAM. So just so that we know, this budget is proposed as, for lack of a better term, a crisis budget. In that we're trying to address the biggest of the town's issues and letting in underfunding the, the capital funds. So we, we, with this budget, we are deliberately underfunding the Public Works Capital Fund, the Fire Department Capital Fund, and the, the Towns Building Maintenance Fund. And we're doing that just simply because that's basically what we have to do. So we are setting aside money enough to get us through the design and engineering for the, the bridge over the Hop River on Bunker Hill. We, we are, we are starting that process, or we have started that process already. We've applied for and got the matching federal funds. So we know that we're going to pay for about 80% of that with federal money. But our take as a town is going to be in the $450,000 category, of which we're putting aside about 160 now to start the process. We're also putting some money in the Bridge and Culvert Fund because we know we have six to seven medium-sized culverts that are in disrepair. Most of them are 50 to 70 years old, and they're having problems. We have hired a professional engineer who specializes in that, and specifically in drainage and drainage structures, to give a more complete evaluation so we can kind of prioritize what we need to do. But we know there are at least two that are, you know, in some, some way down the failure mode path. You know, in one, in both cases, the head walls have fallen off and there's significant erosion under the metal pipes. So we're not putting aside enough money to actually do anything other than we could do some emergency shoring if we have to. We're just putting enough money to get through the design and engineering work on at least one of the critical culverts in town. So we, I, I also want to say that one of the long-term problems this town has is we spend on the municipal budget side, in other words, non-education, about 30% less per capita than our peers. And that overall funding level has really caused an infrastructure deterioration. And we're going to have to address it this year. So right now, what I'm trying to do is this budget is essentially a maintenance budget. In other words, the roads and the buildings will not get any worse, hopefully. But we're not really chipping away at the backlog of work that we need to do. So we have some really good things going for us. The first is we have very little bond obligation. We have a little bit of a bond note for RAM, our portion of the RAM. There's still on for that. And there is a bond for AES that will be cleared in either one more year or two more years. We don't have a lot of debt and we have a reasonable capital reserve. And we probably have enough capital reserve that we're not going to need to worry about short-term borrowing if we have a significant delay in people paying their taxes either. Definitely not with the April quarter, but even the first quarter of the year, which we take in a significant fraction of our yearly budget. If that's delayed, we have enough of a cushion that we should be able to get through that without having to take out any kind of tax anticipation note. So that's really good. Not all towns are in that position. So the other thing is that we are repurposing every fund that we're not actively planning on using. So that includes the Public Works Building Improvement Fund, the New Library Fund, the AES Expansion Fund, and the money that is still in the Times Farm Bridge Capital Project Fund minus the money we still owe for retainage for the contractor as we try to finish closing that out. So basically what we're doing, we can do things a little differently this year, just simply because of the governor's directives. And what I'm suggesting is just take all those unexpended funds as well as the 500, well, not 500,000, the $415,000 from the unexpended fund balance and transfer all of that to the general fund in next year's budget. And then just break out our spending priorities directly. Instead of trying to say, well, some of this fund will go to this fund, some of this fund will go here. We're just dumping everything into the general fund and then funding the most important things out of that. So one of the implications of this budget, and I want you all to be aware of it because this is a departure from what we've done in the past, is that we are using some of fund balance for what is weekly operating expenses. And what I would call operating expenses is the money we spend, the roadwork money. Because the reality is the town, year in, year out, needs to spend about $400,000 just in paving and pavement preservation. And we're going, at least for this year, we're going to be funding that from the unexpended fund balance, essentially. So we are, you know, realistically, we are using some fund balance money for operating expenses. You know, and I want to be clear upfront that that's what's happening. This budget does anticipate a series of personnel changes. Probably the most important is the fourth full-time public works employee. As many of you know, at one point, the town of Andover had a five-person full-time staff and two more full-time summer staff during the paving and construction season. We've trimmed that number down to less than half the numbers of man-hours that the town used to have available for the public crew. And we've cut it down to the point where our backlog of drainage and projects has gotten really long. Looking at it conservatively, right now, we have a seven-to-10-year backlog of drainage projects that need to get done. So adding a fourth person will help us bring that backlog down over time. You know, it's not going to be an instant fix, but it's something the town's really needed to do for quite a while. We are anticipating adding a part-time senior services coordinator. We currently have a senior services coordinator, but that responsibility is given to another town employee. But we really don't have the, you know, the, the time allotted to, to do a reasonable job of that. And our overall funding for senior services in general is roughly what we fund for one and a half elementary school students, is what we provide to all senior services collectively. So it's a pretty small budget overall. We're talking about increasing that, but it's still a pretty reasonable expense. We're having a real hard time keeping up at both the zoning enforcement officer and inland wetlands officer positions. We're way understaffed time-wise. What happened was our longtime person at that position had been just putting in however many hours it took, even though he wasn't getting paid for it. And so we've been understaffing that position for many years. And we, we desperately need to address it because we're, we're A, getting an awful lot of complaints about that. And B, we're not getting enough through to, we need their services for town projects also. And right now, that's, that's being problematic. So the next thing is increasing the compensation for my administrative assistant. She is woefully underpaid based on her job description and what she actually does for the town. And I would also like to bump her up right up to 19 hours, which is the maximum, you know, we can do as a part-time person without benefits. Let's see, at the same time, we are decreasing the hours for the tax collector back to a part-time position, which it was historically. That is still going to require a union negotiation as soon as you actually approve that. Presuming you do approve that. And as we've talked about before, we are planning on combining the budget departments for the town hall and the elementary schools. Other things, this budget includes a 2.5% raise for town employees, which was voted on and passed by the Board of Selectmen. And they are the body that determines that. And that doesn't take into account the union employees whose raises are per contract. So the other thing that's gone up a fair bit is the benefits. Although the healthcare costs premiums did not go up that much. MRF, which is the, the retirement program, did go up somewhat, not a great deal, but somewhat. But the major expense for that is the cost of adding a fourth public works employee. And one of our, one of our real unknowns is that we will be replacing the, the person who, the foreman for Public Works, Ed, will retire. He's slated to retire in November. And so we're going to have two positions for which we don't know what our benefit exposure is going to be. Because they'll be full-time positions and depending on whether they're single or they have families or they're married, our costs, the variability in that cost line is, you know, is 30-plus thousand dollars based on, depending on whether they're single or whether they're married with dependents. So we chose kind of an intermediate value for that. You know, so we could be high or low, you know, 10-plus thousand dollars on that. So again, this budget is designed to, to stop the bleeding in the sense that we're, we're funding enough of the maintenance to get the things we absolutely have to do. But we're not really knocking down much of our backlog. And I want to be honest, in that a lot of these things we're deferring spending on, we are going to end up spending that money. We're just not spending it this year. So, you know, we took a bunch out of the capital, which is appropriate in this, you know, in this time of crisis. But, you know, I hate to say it, but, but we are, we are going to spend a lot of that at some point in the future. The senior center, we took out all the additional funding for the senior center. There is money in the account right now. So we have enough money that the committee can explore design options and get through basically engineering, architecture, and design for a new senior center. But we, we certainly don't have enough money in it to actually fully build one. So, so that's what we, we didn't add anything to that this year. The other big one is roadwork. If you're all curious, you can see the roadwork plan on the town website. I put that on about 10 days ago or so. Basically, the, the goal with the roadwork plan at this point is to fund what we can to prevent any deterioration. So we have shifted our budget priorities to be majority pavement preservation. In other words, do everything we can to keep the good pavement good. But we're accepting the fact that we're probably not going to be chipping away at much of our backlog of bad sections of roads in the upcoming budget. You know, the other limiting factor right now is our ability to do the drainage work that has to be done prior prior to paving some of the bad areas. Because the reality is most of the bad sections are bad because the underlying substrate, you know, has stays excessively wet and we're getting failure from. So what we're doing is trying to address by adding, by prioritizing adding the fourth public works person, we're hoping to start addressing the drainage issues to the extent we can now. So when we finally have the budget to start repaving, we have that, you know, we're further along with that. As far as permanent funds go, one of the things I did last year was I looked at the fire department. Well, actually, they had a budget, so I didn't really have to do much for them. But the public works equipment and then building maintenance. And what I did was put together, basically based on standard equipment profiles for, for the town and for the fire department, how much the town needed to budget per year for those funds. And so what we've done in this budget is we funded them essentially at half of what we should fund them. Which is more than we funded them in the past, so it's an improvement. But it's acknowledging that it's not really what we should be putting aside this year for capital equipment. But, you know, at least it gets us somewhere and it's reasonable, it's a compromise. So that's from the like fifty thousand-foot view. You know, I wish I had better news for you. I would say we're doing a lot better than a lot of towns. We have very little debt. We have always run this town pretty frugally. So we were just basically continuing down that path. But we are putting off some capital spending that will. I guess what I would say is I'm trying not to put off any capital spending if it will cost us significantly more to put it off than to do it now. And kind of prioritizing it that way. That's it from the overview unless you have specific questions for me.
Before anyone else jumps in here, I just want to point out a couple other things. The Board of Selectmen had much debate on the budget as a whole. The biggest thing that we were looking for Eric to do and made adjustments to was to not be artificially lowering the tax rate by funding ongoing operations with reserves. So we tweaked the budget that he had originally given us to, to make sure that was taken into account. So the operating budget that we'll be working off of is funded by taxation, not reserves. So if something changes next year, it means we won't be able to fund capital funds or we won't be able to do any capital projects. But the, but the functional part of the budget that includes staffing and, and services provided is funded via the current mill rate taxation that we're asking for. So it's basically flat across the board, but it, it is encompassed in there. So we're not gonna, we're not looking at like a fake number, you know what I mean?
Adrian, just to jump in for a second, I mean, there's a little bit of a semantic issue there because to an extent, the town roadwork, which is under capital, I mean, I think this is what Eric was getting at before. He, you know, it's under capital. So in a sense, you're right, we're not actually taking fund balance and, and, you know, funding day-to-day operations off of that, which is a bad move. I think we all agree on that. But at the same time, if the projection is we need to spend X every year on the roads and it just happens to flow through capital and we take that money from the fund balance, it kind of is. So it's really kind of how you look at it. Eric, I had a question for you, just to get back to the, the slash and burn that we've done on the capital budget. To the extent that there was one item, just listening to your rundown and the, and the presentations you've given us before, it seems to me the one item that is probably the most critical that if we wanted to look at more closely is the culvert work. Would you agree with that? The drainage and culverts?
In terms of what? In terms of?
In, in terms of try not to kick the can too much?
So here, so we ran into one snag this year. And our first snag was the engineer that we hired to do this broke his neck this spring. And that's delayed, I had anticipated by this time I would have a full-blown culvert replacement plan to present to you. I do not. That's delayed at least three months. Fortunately, he is back in operation and he is actively working on that. But we, we're not where we need to be. My guess is that just looking at the smaller culvert work we're going to do this year and the drainage work we're going to end up doing this year, we're real, and looking at permitting, realistically, we're probably not doing it this year anyway. So, so I'm fairly comfortable that, what I wanted to make sure is that we have enough money to get completely through the design and engineering for our biggest priority, small, you know, medium-sized culvert, you know, by next year with the intention of funding one every year or every other year. So I think we're actually okay. I mean, would I like more money in that budget? Sure. But I think I can live with it.
Okay, so it's really almost a timing thing. It's just something we're really going to have to look at next budget cycle.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and to your point, Rob, yeah, it is a semantic issue. You're, you're correct. We do, we do need to do that. But I think part of our concern is, we also don't want to be in a position where we, we jump the gun, we get a bunch out the gate and then we stall out. So we're trying to look at a bunch of different possibilities. Once this audit comes in and we're done and that's settled, we're going to sit down and try to look at bonding options that we have, whether it's, you know, internal bonding where we actually borrow against our reserves or outside notes and come up with a long-term plan that would encompass both culverts and roads. And basically try to do everything at once. We need to get a little more detail on that and, and put together a package. With everything going on, we felt it was most appropriate to sort of, you know, we weren't ready, quite ready for that either, given the fact that we don't have a culvert plan in place. But once we have that back and we have our bonding answers, our plan is to basically come back to you next year with either a long-term plan and a payment schedule that we would need from a tax base or a bond situation and, and options so that we can address that. But the key to making that happen is to have that fourth person in public works so that we can, you know, pass on the knowledge that Ed has gained all of this time to another person. And then when he retires to replace him, obviously. But having those fourth guy, four guys in place, because that allows us to have a dedicated crew of two guys just doing roadwork that don't get pulled to go down to the transfer station and crush stuff, that don't get pulled to go down to the soccer or, you know, the, the Long Hill Field, that don't get pulled into town hall to, to move furniture. They are just going to be dedicated, public works and, and doing road stuff. So doing side reinforcements after paving, doing, doing skimming, doing sweeping before road projects, doing culvert works, doing basin work, like we just, we had to do that emergency repair on the, on Wells Road. Diane, we got another participant over there, huh? But, um, yeah, so I've, Rob's like staring at the cat, I could tell.
The cat's killing me, man. I'm sorry, I lost you completely, the cat.
All he sees is a cat in a window, so.
Fairly more interesting than your radio.
I knew I lost him when I saw the cat hop up. But no, I guess our point is that, that, that fourth guy is so important to making this plan come together so that way we can dedicate, the more we can bring in house on the roadwork, the better off we're going to be. But we don't, we're not in a position to bring in a paver and a paving crew and all that, it's just not practical. But we are in a position to start doing a lot of the prep work, the basin work, the drainage work. So that way, we're just paying for paving and we're just paying for resealing and chip sealing and micro sealing and all the pavement preservation program that we need to do. So that's, that's why we, we're, we're a little behind on the, the total package, Rob. And, and we'd like to be a little further along, but we will, we're, we're trying to tackle as much as we can without, you know, that we can actually accomplish. So.
Understood. Thanks, Adrian.
Any other questions or comments? For Eric?
Eric, Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong, are we looking at on the town budget, a 2.5 mil increase in the budget?
Uh, no.
You guys, looks like two.
So we are looking at a 2.0% mil rate increase. The estimated mil rate currently will increase by 0.7 mils.
Keep, keep in mind, Kurt, that one, 1.5 of those mils is RAM. That's, that's actually not town, that's RAM.
Right, and, and just to clarify, the town budget is a fifty-five thousand dollar decrease from last year. The AES budget is a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar decrease from last year. The RAM budget is currently a three-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollar increase. So the net increase is two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. Which, that number's not quite right.
I mean, a mil's 265, so it's got to be less than that.
Right, yeah, it's, it's definitely less than that. It's three ninety-four, so it's two hundred, it's just under two hundred. I'm off a hundred thousand somewhere. But the, the, no, I'm not actually off a hundred thousand. But the, the bottom line is that the, and a mil is worth 264, not 261. So ultimately, that ends up to be about a 0.7 mil increase.
Mark, are we in discussion regarding this budget right now?
Sure, absolutely, Kurt.
Okay, I'd just like to say a few things. Number one, let's all not forget what's happening right now around us. We're in, we're, we're all in a situation that's, it's unprecedented, you know, throughout the country, throughout the world. Our original request as a Board of Finance to the AES was a hundred thousand dollars after their first cut of fifty-five thousand, if I'm, if I'm correct. Exceeded our request by forty, rounded off to fifty thousand dollars. I know the Board of Selectmen asked for two hundred, but myself, I'm speaking for myself. I'm personally very satisfied with the, you know, with the reduction in the AES budget. Being a lifelong member of the town, there's, there's two major important things in this town, especially for a townie like, like I am. And that's, and it's not in any particular order, but it's the, it's the kids and their education and it's the seniors. And I, I personally think that this budget here, the school has already, you know, took it upon themselves to, to take care of the kids with no reduction in staff. Myself personally, I, I don't want to see us reduce anybody in these, in these times. There's enough people losing their jobs, don't know if they're ever going to go back to their jobs, so on and so forth. So I'm not comfortable with anything over a zero increase in our budget personally. And however we have to get there, and still keeping, keeping in mind, I know Scott would probably kiss me and or hug me when if I said this, but the seniors, we need to keep moving forward with the community slash senior center. Right now, it's, it's, it's not gonna, you know, we don't have the funds available, but they can still start the planning. There is money, you know, in the fund. I'd like to see a little, you know, maybe a little bit more going into that fund for this year. But that, that should continue moving forward. The roads, yep, they're a mess. They've been a mess probably the last two administrations in this town. And this present Board of Selectmen have inherited the entire mess of about twenty years of neglect. And now here we are in, in, in the, in the COVID-19 pandemic and, and we're looking at to fix our roads. And I don't, I don't think we can. I personally don't think we can right now.
Kurt, just to be clear, this does not fix roads. All we're trying to do is preserve roads.
Before, I understand, you know, I may, I may not say the exact right thing the way you want me to. But, you know, I've looked at the different items, so we've, we've gone, Eric's doing a fantastic job putting this together. I'm still for a, an overall town plan, seeing we have no debt, having been involved in the, in the, in the fire station complex, the school addition renovation complex. All of that debt's been paid off. Any mil increase to the people, especially this year, and who knows what's coming next year? I don't even want to think about it. But I, I think is, it would, is not, is not something that I'd like to be part of.
We, we agree with you, Kurt, but we don't control RAM. That, that's the.
Origin of the RAM, in the last two weeks, I, I've reached out to our two representatives from RAM, Stephanie Bancroft, Dave Gustinian. I've reached out to Andy, Andy Tierney, Town Manager of Hebron, Joe Asklar, the new second selectman in Marlborough. And all three towns are having the same issue, you know, that, that, you know, that Andover is, Hebron's having it.
No, it's, it's a little different. Our issue is much different than theirs because our share of the kids up there has gone up dramatically.
I understand that, Adrian. Please don't interrupt me.
Well, just.
Me, Adrian. All I'm saying is that when you discuss the work that's gone into the RAM budget this year, like Eric had said, he's talking to the superintendent, they, Stephanie told me she's never been contacted by anybody from the town, whether it be the, the town administration department, the Board of Finance Department, the, the selectmen. They're, they're on top of it and she's very sure that the RAM budget, and so is in Andy Tierney, the town manager in Hebron, will come in at, at a slightly either zero or a slightly above zero increase. That's the overall budget. That's not Andover shares, I understand that. We have twelve to fourteen kids going there. So just, I, I think we should be looking at a zero increase budget. No, no, because it's unprecedented what we have to do, even making the decision with no town meeting or anything. I don't know. Good luck. I'll, I'll end it with that, Mark.
Well, Kurt.
Okay, thanks, Kurt.
You didn't want to be interrupted, so let me just clarify then.
All right, I'll give you a few seconds here, Adrian.
Unlike other, unlike other towns, we're going from a 12% to a 17% share of the budget. So our share of the budget is going up almost 5%, irregardless of an increase over there. So that's, that's the first issue. And then the second issue is, when you talk about roadwork, we're not talking about actually repaving roads. We're talking about just preserving them so they don't get worse. This, this not about, actually, I mean, if people are expecting us to go out and pave roads, we're not. We're talking about literally putting sealers on the road so they do not deteriorate any worse.
But I don't think this is.
You asked me not to interrupt you, so please don't interrupt me. So the, the issue becomes, the issue becomes if we don't do this, it will cost us more down the road. And my example to you would be Townsend Road, we, we put it off three years from the time it was bid to the time we did it, and it doubled in price. So we can't afford to do that on these other roads. We cannot.
That's all I got. Can I jump in for a sec?
You got the floor.
Thanks. So my take on this, and this is again just me, you know, we started this budget season out in a very different place. We got an eye-popping number, we started talking about chipping away at it, putting aside all that's happened between now and then. We've, this budget is dramatically less than what was originally brought to us. And I understand it's still an increase, but, I mean, just. And I understand it's still an increase, but I mean, just looking at it, going through, before even Eric went through it, just when I looked at the spreadsheet, it was very clear to me that this is a treading water budget. This is the keep the lights on budget. Given that the town itself historically is about 20% of the budget, I don't know exactly the figure for this year, but it's roughly, it's usually one fifth of the budget is the actual town. And then that the rest of the 80% is education. You know, I don't know where the rest of the cuts would even come from to get us to zero. It's not that I want to bring a tax, tax increase to the town, but 2 and 2% is a very, very different number than 10. I was worried about 10. I didn't like 10. 2 however, is a wildly different thing. And, you know, to Adrian's point, to Eric's points that he's made many times, I would hate to see us hack and slash and get to zero only to hurt ourselves for next year, for two years from now, for, you know, for five years from now. I don't want to do that. You know, if we put off, you know, say we don't fund the, the equipment funds, you know, we don't put money away to buy a fire truck or whatever. And even now we're reducing, but if we don't, then we just got to bond more when it comes time to do it, and then we pay interest. So it's six one way, half a dozen the other. It's not easy choices, but I personally, I don't know how we get to zero here. I really don't. This is pretty bare bones. That's my take.
Yeah, I say just one quick thing too, that the other difference is last year, when I was Chair of the Board of Finance, I took the time with our board, Rob included, Jeff Murray, myself, you know, Hewitt. We, we all went through this budget line by line and took out 10% last year. We took 100 grand out of that budget last year off the operating budget so that way we could reevaluate and, and see what it looked like getting through so that we would have room to, to make these adjustments in staffing that we needed. We took it out to see if we could function. We're able to, we're able to function, but now we have someone in there that, that can actually evaluate it. Eric's gone through and evaluated and said, this is where we need staff because we're not meeting our duties to the town residents. This is where we are having issues with, with keeping up. And, and so we're, what we took out last year, you know, the adjustments that are coming this year are, are the reevaluate, you know, a whole full year evaluation of that. So, you know, I'd like that to be taken into consideration too. We dropped the town budget by 10% last year, just for perspective. So.
Just to clarify, the town ops budget, the actual town, town?
Yes, exactly.
Obviously, we don't have control of the education, but I mean, my, my take on when Eric came back to us this year with the original budget request was that some of the, some of the hack and the slashing we did last year, Adrian, you know, was too much.
Absolutely, but you don't.
We went as far as we could last year.
Right.
We got some resistance and some pushback, but we went through it anyway and we did it. And then the evaluation of that was, you went a little too far on some of this stuff.
Well, in, in some places, we hit the nail on the head. The transfer station, we took 25 grand out and that turned out to be a good decision. We took money out of some of the positions and that turned out to be a bad decision. So some were winners and some were losers. I don't think it was all bad, but it allowed us to, to make a much clearer budget this year. So.
Agreed.
Well, good input. I think we need to kind of get everybody's initial take on that if anybody has anything else to offer. Diane or Louise, Dave?
My take is I'm still just fuzzy with the numbers on the AES because they still have that addition to staff. And I don't even know if it's needed or not. So, and I just want to make sure we're not double counting, you know, software or licensing for accounting or anything like that between the two towns if we're going to bring it all into the town budget. And just clean that up so we have a good number.
I kind of agree too. I think we need to look more into like the workshops that we're going to be doing so we get more information. Because I hear both sides and I don't want to see an increase as well, but I think it's going to be really kind of tough to get it down to zero. But again, we don't know everything that they're cutting. So I think we need to look at what they actually cut in budget and see if there's anything more. And I know there's someone on, see, I forgot her name. But she did give a very nice email, Joanne, Joanne Hebert. She had a very nice email, kind of showing some of the items that could possibly be looked at. And I was wondering if anyone's going to kind of look at that as well, what suggestions were.
I think the Board of Ed, you know, has, I presume, it's part of their, their duties, right, is to dig into that. It's going to be a little difficult for us, I think, to second guess them line by line by line without a lot of research and diligence. And that's going to be tough for us to do. There are probably some places we can look at.
Yeah.
You know.
It's open for my.
They were able to come up with 150 grand and I'm sure that took work to do, but there's, you know, it's, I have to say that some of the reports and stuff I've seen, it's not always very clear to me where the money's going and how it's going, but you know, that's, I haven't spent a ton of time doing it either. I think that that could be potentially improved upon, but anyway, okay, good. But Eric, you have your hand up or you?
Yeah, so I just want to say, just the one thing to remember is that you as a Board of Finance, while you're allowed to change the bottom line number for AES, you know, you really, I mean, you can't be telling them to, you can't be telling them how to spend it. The only obligation you really have is to give them, to either agree with their bottom line number or to give them a bottom line number that you feel is appropriate.
Good, good point. It's great to bring that up Eric. Any other general observations or questions?
The only thing I'd have to say, Mark, is the, basically is a one and a half percent we can't touch because that's RAM. So we're dealing with about a half of percent. And, you know, I just, I kind of agree with Kurt. We need to try as hard as we can to try and cut as much as possible there. I'm just concerned looking forward. Business wise, you know, I've had to cut 40% of my staff and it's, it's just, it's, it looks very ugly.
Yeah, in, in, I, I don't disagree with you. What I would say to keep in mind is that, one, if you look at Andover, if you look at the general budget and you compare those to other municipalities, we're underfunded by about 30% in general to start with. And also, the, the general budget took a fairly significant decrease last year. And if you really want to get to a zero budget and you want to do it just with the town's portion, because that's all you're talking about now, you're looking at somewhere around another 10%, 8 to 10% reduction in the town budget. And that's going to be, you know, anything's possible, but you're going to be seriously cutting into the town's ability to function. And if that's where you think we need to go, I would certainly give you recommendations where, where I thought those, that effect would be the least deleterious, but it's, you know, a lot of that's going to hurt. You know.
I'm just concerned, I mean, this is my personal opinion. I think we just need to take a hard look at it. I'm concerned about down the road to tax collections. You know, there's some people that are not going to bounce back from this. I'm worried about foreclosures and just trying to get the tax collections on the other side. And I'm not afraid of taking a hard line position. I'll take the heat in another year when we bounce back and advocate for more spending. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just, I'm talking about with what's going on. I think as a board, we just need to consider that and try and look at it, take a really hard look at it, what we can do to try and keep it as minimal as possible. That's all.
Okay, thanks Dave. I personally had a couple of detailed comments and, you know, I know we're going to go into this later and I'll, but I just want to make an observation and this probably for Eric and if you guys don't mind me talking, just getting in the weeds a little bit. And the auditor services, you have a note that that's not yet contracted. Didn't we accept the contract offer from, from the auditor? So that ought to be locked in, right?
We did.
Okay. So that's just a memo that needs to be updated, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It probably won't change the number greatly, unfortunately. Diane, I think we're getting echo from your phone. Okay, we're good. So cost of software, so the conversion, that's probably something that we ought to talk about when we get into the detail stuff. I guess that's not, we don't really need to talk about it now.
Yeah.
Tax collector, you already changed up. You already just explained. Go ahead.
So I was going to say, the software, we budgeted based on the packages we looked at, not including QuickBooks. And we were looking at a, a transition cost that was a maximum of $30,000 for the software acquisition, the changeover of the chart of accounts and going through the process for both us and AES. That number, you know, if we did the transition now and we did it off of the Board of Ed's budget or threw in a little bit from the town side, you could potentially knock that down to zero. But, you know, it, the, the problem is, is we still don't really know for sure what software package we're adopting. So that's a big unknown from my perspective.
Okay. Telephone, we're actually budgeting an increase. I thought we were hoping it to go down with the V I P system we're putting in.
So I, it wasn't up. It was even, at least I thought it was.
Now you had 10, 6 in 2019, 2020. We've got 12, 6 in 2021.
I'll review that. That may.
It's something to take a look at.
Sure.
And again, there's to get in the weeds a little bit. Those are really the only questions I have. There are a couple of little things that I'm curious about.
Okay. I'll review both those prior to the next meeting.
I just think with this condensed schedule is, as clean as we can have the next run, it would be to all of our advantages to.
Sure.
Anything else from the board members on the, talk to Eric about the.
I'm just going to ask a quick question. What, what were you just talking about? I didn't think that the software was in this budget.
There's a $30,000 line item for conversion to new software.
What line are you looking at? Down in capital?
No, it's under treasurer slash financial.
Oh, you put it in treasurer. Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's.
It's your office.
Yeah. I, yeah, Adrian had.
Doesn't have a account number associated with it, yeah.
Was going to come out of, try to get that out of this year's budget using residual from this year's budget.
I think Laura mentioned something similar, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
It, it, that's an unknown. I understand it. I just wanted to.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board about specific items or just comments in general? Okay, hearing none for now. I know we'll have to, talking about this again in a week. I guess we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is AD feedback from the town budgets Google site. And my initial take on this is that we probably did not need to read through all of the feedback, feedback items in the meeting. Does anybody feel differently? I, I would characterize them as basically being of a couple of different natures. There's some people that ask very specific questions. There's a lot of concern of the educational budget. A lot of concern over the RAM budget, which frankly, we have very little or no control over. Especially this year, it's going to be kind of what it ends up landing on at the Board of Ed. A lot of people were concerned about that very, very high significant increase we were talking about with the initial budget with the 11%. And obviously we were going to take that way down and we've taken it down tremendously since then. So not quite as applicable. But certainly some concern over the AES budgeting, a lot of concern over, over the process. Not going to town meeting. Was there a way we can delay this? And that does not seem feasible and given the town attorney's opinion, I don't think we have any choice. Believe me, I'd much rather go to town meeting with, with something than, than act as a board and make this decision. It's not a fun job. There are some very specific questions. A lot of them have to do again with the educational budget, which really it, it ends up as Eric pointed out, needs to be addressed at the Board of Education. We can't control exactly where they spend their money, but we, we can set the dollar amount that we think is appropriate.
And I think it's fair to point out that we have asked them for help and they've given it. I think it's fair to point that out too, even though we can't go line item by line item and strip money out of their budget. We can go to them and we have gone to them and said, look, guys, we need, we need some more from you.
Yeah.
Mark, I just have a quick comment. One of my reasons of trying to have a minimalist budget is the fact that we can't have a town meeting. I, I just think that adds to the reason why we need, we need to attempt to do that for the town.
I think that's a fair point, Dave. It would make me more inclined. You know, it's one thing to go to town meeting and advocate for a significant increase. It's another thing to do it unilaterally and I get that. Then again, you know, things have changed. You know, it's not like we're going to the town and trying to sell a 5% increase, a 6% increase or something like that. We're down to two. And I don't disagree that we can look at this next week and see if we can get to one, one and a half or something. My only thought is that just understanding what the town budget is as a component of the total budget to get to zero, you know, as Eric pointed out, involves a, a real, you know, stripping a lot out of the town budget. Like I, if we're going to do that, we're going to lose the public works guy. That has to, I don't know how you do it.
No, I agree. I just say we need to, I just want to take a good look at it. It may be unreasonable. I, I hear you.
Yeah. No, philosophically, I understand what you're saying. I agree.
I agree with you too, Dave. And I think one of the things that, you know, if we were going to town meeting, honestly, I, I, even given the situation, I'd be pushing probably to, to be more aggressive to right the past wrongs and, you know, and to, and to put us back on a track where, where we're doing the right things by the, by the town and the long-term planning for the town. But that, obviously without the town meeting and I'm more willing to go to as close to zero as we can. I don't know that we can get there reasonably. I do agree that we've taken a lot out. I think we, we have some concerns over the school budget still. I know that they've done a pretty, put a lot of effort into trying to reduce it, but you know, I, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be trying to talk people into probably a little higher if, if we were going to town meeting. So I think Dave makes a good point. We, we've got to be as responsible as we can, given this situation.
Well, to be, to be fair and to Dave's point and Rob's point and yours as well, you, you're absolutely right. The fact that we're not going to town meeting is definitely an issue. And we've tried to take that into consideration by, you know, by going across the board as much as we can. But I will also point out that if we were not going to town meeting, the RAM budget is separately voted on from the town budget. So asking the town to completely absorb the RAM increase is not fair. Because they would, if they wanted to have a separate budget, they could. We could even decide to have a budget vote on the town side. If let's say we could somehow swing an approval and not get, you know, blasted by the state on it. We could, we could do a, we could do a town budget vote, but we still can't force them to do a RAM budget vote. That's, that's. That's, that's their own prerogative. So, um, asking us to absorb it completely, I don't think is fair, considering they are voted on separately.
Okay, any further comments?
So I, I have one further comment, and that is internally, we've heard a lot of people complaining about the increased costs at RAM. And I agree with those complaints. I would have been much happier seeing RAM come in at a 3% or 4% decrease, given the number of students that they lost. But I also listened to the RAM budget meeting and I did not hear a single, a single resident from Andover, other than Andover's representative on the RAM Board of Education, make a comment asking them to cut the budget. Not a single one. So, I mean, we as a town have failed in our fiduciary responsibility to give the RAM Board guidance. And frankly, we, you know, that's boggling to me, but that's reality. You know, here we are, we're complaining about it, but we haven't actually done anything about it. So, I mean, the reality is we're gonna live with it.
Derek, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The survey that was put out there, I only went halfway through the, the meeting last night. All the people that commented on the survey, they went directly to the RAM budget. Were they, did they bring those up? Because I, I know there were people that responded from Andover regarding that.
You know, not while, I only stayed on till like 9:30 and they were still going at it strong then, but they hadn't really read through those comments at that point. I mean, I think they got them to their individual members, but they hadn't never, they hadn't actually. And honestly, Susan, the, the Chair of their Board of Finance, I had a discussion with her and she basically said, look, we went around all the town, we got, we gave budget presentations, we put all this out there, we got almost no feedback. We're going for it, you know, and that's what she, I was pleasantly surprised that they came back agreeing to a 0% budget, because the grumblings that I heard were that they were gonna try to be increasing the budget from the, you know, their last published budget, because a bunch of them wanted to get some of their pet projects done. So, you know, that's just, that's where we're at with that.
If memory serves, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but their original budget proposal that we originally got was a 4% increase?
It was, but the majority of cuts between that budget and the 1.5% or so budget, 1.7% budget that they showed was a math error on their part in calculating benefits. They were off like 3% because they were double counting of benefits for basically their entire staff. There were a significant fraction of their staff.
140.
Yeah, it was a big number.
So to really think about it realistically, they went from 1.7 to zero.
Correct, correct.
Kurt, do you know, you were on the call later for the, did they ever bring that stuff up on the, on the RAM call yesterday?
The, the, in regards to the people that emailed in or whatever?
Yeah, the feedback.
No, no, they, I don't think they felt they had time to do that.
I mean, listen, I, I know when you guys had Dr. Law give the presentation to your board, I, I gave her quite a few questions, both on the current budget and the, and the upcoming stuff, and I had had conversations with her. I can't say that I reached out to the RAM, to the RAM Chair over there. You know, I felt that, you know, talking to Dr. Law was probably the best direction, having, you know, been to a couple of meetings over there and, and saw the, the way that board functioned at least. But, yeah, unfortunately, I, I don't think, as a town, I've, I've heard the same feedback even from her, that in those meetings over the course of the year, except for our representatives, they've only seen, you know, three or four residents to, to anything, so. You know, I, I know I was the only Andover resident that went to the, to the field presentation that was up in Marlboro, you know, when they did that, so, you know.
I reached out to Stephanie and Dave and, and I, I received a wealth of information from Stephanie. Stephanie Bancroft, our rep, is the Secretary for the RAM Board, so she has everything in, in front of her. And even she couldn't understand of what we were talking about with the large increase that, that, you know, we were showing we were having, so. But they're more than willing to, you know, chime in on any, any of our meetings to, to listen in. I think it may, maybe even take just an invite for that, either for the Board of Selectmen or for the Board of Finance. But her and Dave are more than willing to, to come into, you know, into the call, especially now that we're virtual.
Yeah, the, the explanation that I was given was simply that it was the percentage increase that the other towns' percentage of students is going down and ours went up, because those bigger classes are finally up there and that, that will then stabilize over the next couple of years. But this is the first year that that increase is really gonna hit us.
Oh, we questioned her a little bit too on a lot of the fixed costs and why they weren't looking, or were they looking at a lot of the contracts they had and could they find ways to reduce it? And, you know, she basically pushed back and said, well, I have the same facilities, I have the same fields, the fields are becoming the safety issues. So we kinda heard all that. And, and I think, Eric, you make a good point. You know, I was on that meeting for at least part of it and didn't feel like I was, you know, maybe I should have chimed in, but the, you know, kinda missed that piece of it. And not being knowledgeable enough about where they were going, honestly, I didn't feel as comfortable doing that as I might have been, but yeah, when we had that presentation by Patricia Law, it was, this COVID problem was not the problem it is now. So it's the other piece of it. But it, I think we're getting maybe a little bit off topic. You know, it's, it's we're wailing and gnashing teeth a little bit about things we really can't change at this point. So, you know, as, as much as I think we were all exasperated by this RAM budget and the situation and, and maybe, you know, we need to find a way to do that different. I, I think that was a good point that maybe we have our reps that maybe attend the Board of Finance or whatever meeting and try to ask them, how can we impact this more than we are now? Maybe there's ways that they can suggest. Maybe it's just showing up that has, can have a big impact. So it's something to think about.
I'm, I'm, I'm sure they will, Mark. And was anybody on the call when they mentioned the, that you were on there, Eric, when Andy Tierney dropped the, what they called the bomb on them in regards to that DOT project? Where the, the traffic lane through the high school, it was an extra 100 to $200,000 that they didn't expect. And you shed some light-
What's your que, your question?
Yeah, can you shed some light on exactly what that was about? I didn't catch the whole thing, but Stephanie said it was dumped on them that day.
Yeah, so my understanding is they applied for a specific type of funding. And it's for a project that directly impacts the school, although maybe it has some benefits to the town also. It's, I thought it was the, the revamping of the traffic flow for the parking lot itself responding to that, the teacher that was killed a couple of years ago. And the, the, basically the funding source they applied for was not a funding source that was available to an education system. It was available only to a municipality. So Hebron applied on behalf of RAM, you know, and then basically their initial fund allocation, what they were gotten, once they did, got the actual project cost estimates, wasn't enough to complete the work. And so on that basis, the question becomes, what do you do? You know, your two options are either to not do the grant and just refuse the funding and say, we can't do it. Or you have to come up with, RAM had to absorb the additional cost. And the other thing that was important there is there was zero, what the contractor gave them was an absolute cost with zero contingency built in. So, and I don't know about you, but there aren't that many large municipal projects that make it through without spending any of the contingency. So the, the, they also had to put some money into, uh, you know, into a contingency fund if they were gonna actually do that project. But again, that's not something, I mean, I looked at it a couple of years ago. I have not looked at it in depth.
The way it sounded to me that they're, they're going, they're going to spend the extra money, I think, to complete the project, because they were committed to that after that fatality. Okay.
Mark, you're on mute.
Thank you.
Yep.
David, we heard it something for you, and I'm not sure if there was just background noise or not.
Background.
Okay, thanks. All right, our, our, our agenda item here is feedback from, from the town's website. So, I mean, we've asked Amanda to maybe have that posted and available. Hopefully you all had a chance to read it. Does anybody think we need to, to go further into it? I mean, there's some, there's some, some good points in there. There's some important feedback. I think a lot of it, as I said, was really before we, we cut this, cut this budget back the way we did. So I, I feel comfortable with some of what we've done, but anybody have any other comments on it? Rob?
I just had a quick question. Are we gonna let that run between now and our next meeting? Is there any additional?
I think until, until we vote. You know, we just continue to gain deep feedback.
Good, especially- Sorry, I was just gonna say, in light of the fact of, of the, the change of process, I think it's-
Yeah, well, it's important. And, and actually, the governor's directive, you know, states that, that we should do everything we can, I think, to, to, to get public input in light of the change of process. So it's even more important now. I, I think it's good.
Do we think that we have to respond back to anybody specifically for, for specific questions that they had? Or just maybe do a general statement out on the website? Thank you for your feedback and give them some kind of, we heard you, but here's the deal, kind of thing?
Mark, or would the Board of Finance have any objection to us just putting a note that, 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 you know, hearing the concerns with COVID or something like that, that the budget's been revised and then the, the current budget is as of, you know, our previous meeting that we've now forwarded to you? Would that be okay?
Putting it out on the website, you mean?
Yeah, so we've made the change, but we haven't actually clarified that that budget that up, that's up there is the, the new budget.
The revised budget. All right, that's appropriate.
It is on the, it is on the website currently and on the Google Docs site. And it's clear because of the date of the budget. There's two budgets, the original budget's up there and the revised budget's up there.
Yeah, that said, I don't think it's bad to have a little note, like at the top, alerting people to that. Even though, I agree, like, the file's gonna say the date, but I think what Adrian's getting at is, is to flag it for people.
Exactly, thank you.
Fair enough to say, you know, you know, due to concerns of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance and, and input from the town residents, that this is the revised budget and just point it out that way.
Sure.
As long as you guys are okay with us putting that up, that'd be great.
I have no objection.
Amanda here. I also wanted to point out that I did upload the feedback to the website. I did it anonymously. If you think it should be posted differently, please just let me know.
Can I ask a, just a, just a question? In, in terms of the feedback or the questions that might have been offered, can we get some sort of a response to that, a, a best response? In, in terms of, for example, like the RAM budget, normally, maybe people won't go out and go to every meeting, but they have the opportunity to vote or up and down on the budget, so they, they, they save it for that point. But as far as all the other questions that we have about the budget, since we don't have the opportunity to vote up and down on the town budget, if, if you would kindly just give us your best answer instead of a, a thank you for, for, for asking or whatever else, but just try to respond as best you can. That might help, you know, because again, remember, we, we always had the opportunity to vote, vote up and down a budget, right? And, and, yeah, and, and, and without that opportunity, if we raise questions to try to answer them fully, to, to the best of your ability, because I-
That's, it's a good question. I, I appreciate the input and, and actually, I think that brings up a, an opportunity here. Maybe the way we do that is we take the specific questions from, from the input forms and we could kind of put it in a, a little bit of a Q and A or document, you know, these are the questions that have been asked and these, we would do our best to kind of answer them and then-
Exactly.
Maybe that's the kind of thing, you know, Eric or somebody, and I hate to put more on Eric, but maybe he could try to summarize answers based on the questions.
And for easy use, my thought would be maybe to try to categorize them, you know, if you have
Yeah.
multiple questions about AES, multiple questions about RAM. And we can kind of try to block them, right?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think you need to have-
You're answering six.
Yeah, exactly. You know, I think, yeah, because it's probably gonna fall into three or four main categories and they could just have a kind of an all-inclusive, you know, here are the four questions regarding the AES budget, and then you kind of bullet point, answer them as best we can below that.
Right.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think we can get into answering questions about RAM's budget, though.
No, but we can explain the process and kind of what, what, you know, what, what the limitations are and kind of what the, what the impact or why it's having an impact.
For instance, the things that we've explained on these, in, in our meetings, the people that have been here tonight have heard about the student ratio issue. Do we know that everybody knows, understands that? That's something we can explain. It's not us digging into RAM's budget and telling them what to do or anything like that. We're trying to explain why RAM is spending X on Y, you know, specific line item. We can-
Justify the sports fields, but you know-
You know, right, we can't do that. But what we can do is explain, look, RAM brings in a flat budget, that means plus X to us because of the student ratio issue.
Yeah, exactly, Rob.
That's a paragraph.
Boom. I just don't want to get us into justifying their budget, that's all.
Yeah, and I think, I think the same is gonna be true with the elementary school budget, honestly. You know, that, I think that those questions are, you know, we can, we can provide some basic information, but really have to direct them back to the Board of Education. Unfortunately, it's not our purview.
Right, but we could, yeah, we can just kind of do an overview, and I think that's fair to ask.
That's a good, it's a good, good, good input. I, I think it's fair enough, so.
Sure, I will work on that.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay. Do you have any other comments on the budget or on the feedback process?
Mark?
Yeah.
I had offered before, from the town side at least, to be available, you know, like on a, on a, on a Saturday, whether it's a Zoom call or something. If people want to try to reach out and, and, you know, ask us to answer questions if they do want more detailed feedback. I don't know, based on the response that we got on the surveys, if you still feel we want to do that, but I'll still offer that up if we get through this process next week, once you guys are done with it, to then be available to answer residents' questions regarding anything that's in the budget, you know. I'm still willing to do that if that'll help.
Okay, and that would still, that would be a public meeting, right? We would have to announce it.
Yeah. We, we would just, you know, if you guys decide that that's what you would like to do, you know, I'll be available for a meeting. We can do it on a Saturday morning or something, so maybe more people can participate. I know sometimes the night meetings are tough. And just be available to answer questions. People can chime in and we'll answer them and we can always record it and, and put them back out there as well on the, on the YouTube channel we started.
Okay, yeah, we'll put, leave it on the table. I think it's good. Thanks for offering.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions about the budget input or the feedback process, which is really our agenda item? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna ask that we go ahead and move to the next agenda item, which actually is the addition of an agenda item under eight, a new business, that's AE. That's the appointment of a Board of Finance representative to the A H M Oversight Committee. Linda Fish isn't present today, but she, she actually offered her services- Linda Fish isn't present today, but she, she actually offered her services, she was interested in that. So it would probably be prudent for us to go ahead and move to appoint her and that, to that as the Board of Finance representative. The A H M Oversight Committee, is anybody, so move?
I moved to sacrifice Linda, I mean, to nominate Linda to be liaison for H M.
Who was the second, was that you, Kurt? Okay, very good. Any discussion? Since she's not here to defend herself, no, she did, she did offer, she's.
Okay, I believe you.
Yeah, she did, I thought maybe she copied you guys on it, but maybe she just copied the rest of us, so.
I might have missed an email.
All right, maybe not. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote then. Kurt?
Aye.
Hey, Rob?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Louise?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Hey, I'll also vote aye, and we have motion passes unanimously. Okay. We can move on to our next agenda item, which is nine A, approval of the meeting minutes from our meeting, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes. Any discussion on those? You have a motion to approve them? Louise makes a motion to approve, Diane seconds, let's go ahead and take a vote. Any further discussion on the motions? Okay, Kurt?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Louise?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
I'll also vote aye, that passes unanimously also, thank you. Okay, getting the thumbs up from Amanda. Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item, that's number ten, liaison reports. I don't believe we have any liaison reports for this meeting. Committees haven't been meeting. Next item is eleven, Board Open Discussion, like we've had a fair amount of discussion already, but that is a standing agenda item. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to address? Okay, hearing none, I guess we can move on to item number twelve, which is our public speak. Amanda, do you wanna go down through the list again and offer the opportunity for the public who's still attending to speak?
Yes.
And again, I would, I would ask people to kinda keep it concise, if you would, just out of courtesy and keep it efficient. We do wanna get your input, but would like to just keep it as concise and to the point as we can.
Liz?
Okay, now we're all set, thank you.
Thank you. Melissa? Latessa? Rachel?
No, thank you.
Alain Picard?
I, I just wanted to say you're all doing a great job. Like you said, we do have to keep an eye on RAM and make sure our comments get to them. How they treat them in their meetings is another thing, you know, we can't tell them to go ahead and can't tell them in their meetings, they should be discussing all the emails that they're getting. But hopefully, the information is making it to them to make a good decision. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Weber?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Thank you. Joanne Hever?
All right, I'll try to keep it quick, I just wanted to reiterate that I agree with Mr. Hewitt that in this year, you have to, you know, be mindful of other people. You know, probably most of us, hopefully, that are here are working, luckily I am working from home. But just keep that in mind, I know you've all, you know, done a good job. The other thing is, I made myself really, really invested in this process this year. I have reached out to RAM, I think all of you know, cause I copied you and all of this, so you won't be getting any more of that. And I have been on every single meeting this year, talking about them, and they didn't unmute me. I was commenting and they kept, and I don't know if it was Dr. Law that had the mute button that night, but I was trying to get my comment in there, Mr. Anderson, I will be there for you in that. And, oh, I think my name was brought up about bringing up specific cuts. I just wanted, you know, being invested means I'm investigating other towns' budgets, I'm steering through them, I'm looking at them, I'm comparing for people. You know, that's what I do at work, so I'm really, really, you know, when I speak of the education budgets, I'm doing that on behalf of trying to help the town this year. I feel like I, you know, from the time I've been here for fifteen years, the town part is always giving back. And we never do ask, you know, in other years, we haven't, you know, kind of asked a lot for our education. We all value it, I value it, this is a year when enrollment is down. Truly feel you could, you know, they did great last night, I'm very proud of them, I was not expecting. Cuts, and I'll make this quick, but they have.
We are having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, no, okay.
A little bit more clear or closer to your microphone, thank you.
Seems, can you hear me now?
Not really.
Yeah, it's about the same, we can hear you, but it's, it's pretty faint.
Oh, let me turn up my microphone.
That sounds better.
Yeah. So when, you know, when we're asking for these cuts, it is interesting that they come back with money from this year's budget. So clearly, you know, there's money left. And, you know, we're not asking them to be pinpoint, but again, I am just trying to support the town side this year, feeling that the enrollment numbers are down, so it's okay to go to them a little bit. And ask, you know, without sacrificing the good education that they get. You know, I'll make more comments along the way, I know everyone's tired, but there are people out there that are trying to support it.
All right, thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, okay, we have Jenny Morrell?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Laura Edwards?
I'm all set, thanks.
Laura Bush? I cannot unmute you. Please unmute yourself if you'd like to speak up.
I'm good, thank you.
Diane?
I'm all set here.
Thank you, I think that's all.
I for one appreciate the fact that so many members showed up and participated and listened to what the Board of Finance discussed, it's great to see that participation.
Yeah, I appreciate that also, thank you, Eric, and it is good to see, I mean, we, we need the input, we need to not work in a vacuum. And, you know, this is the best way for us to figure that out and make sure that we're, you know, people are paying attention and, and we're doing the right thing. All right, thank you, hearing no more public speak, next item would be adjournment on our agenda. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I so move.
Rob's motion?
I'll second that.
Louise is second, any discussion? Okay, let's vote, Rob?
Aye.
Louise?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Okay, and Diane?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll also vote aye, motion passes, the meeting is adjourned. I wanna thank you, everybody, and we'll do it again next week.
Thanks, as usual, Mark.
Take care.
Have a good night.